Okay, so Dr. Carlin had asked us to come and just kind of give an update on what we've been doing. I know that we came two years ago about the same time. Some of you were here, some of you were not here. But just to kind of let you know what we've accomplished in the two short years that we've been in existence. We've, somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-eight to thirty-nine thousand dollars we have raised throughout the first two years. And have awarded thirty-four thousand dollars in scholarships to thirteen students. We had six our first year, and we had seven this last year. We present those on senior night at the high school. And scholarships have ranged from fifteen hundred dollars to five thousand dollars. Kind of based on how our committee feels the applicants were. The most important part of their application is an essay, so that weighs very heavily on that. We are getting ready for our big event, which is the Buffalo Ball on New Year's Eve. And up to this point, that's been the only thing that we've done other than private donation towards this. Because if someone donates a thousand dollars or more, then we give them an opportunity to also name the scholarship that we present at senior night. So Buffalo Ball obviously is on New Year's Eve at the golf club at Southland. And tickets are sixty dollars a person, and that includes a really nice buffet. Actually, this year we've added prime rib, salmon, and chicken. We had a former Garden City High School student that has stepped up, and he's donated all the beef. So that has given us an opportunity to have a really nice meal. We offer wine with dinner. And then there's some entertainment, which is the Garden City High School Show Choir. We have pianists that come in. We're trying to add this ring quartet this year to play during dinner to add a little bit of new ambiance in that also. And then a midnight toast. We also have students that are from the high school that do a coat check for us. They do valet, and then we also offer a safe ride home. So we've tried to really cover every avenue that we can to offer a really nice evening to our guests. We have had a couple of you at our event, hope to see you again. But it's a really special night for us, and I mean, we really hope to really keep growing. And there's a new GM out at Southland, and he actually is outstanding. And I think he's going to be a very important part of us maintaining this for ten, fifteen years is what his goal would be. Just because of what he's heard from the first two years of him coming in new to our community and not really having any event like this in our town. So, um, I guess I would tell you that already we have six sponsors that have stepped forward that have donated a thousand dollars or more to be table sponsors, which we also promote them a lot throughout the month of December. Because we do radio engagements, we do TV engagements, we advertise the Roundball Classic, which will be this weekend. So we try to also give back to those businesses and individuals that give to us by promoting their name and their business as much as we can.
And then this year, our goal, well, this year and future years, we'd love to be able to give twenty thousand dollars a year worth of scholarships. But the biggest goal is to be able to become endowed through the Western Kansas Community Foundation. That way we can share in Match Day. We felt like those were funds we're just kind of missing out on. So we have to be able to have an additional five to ten thousand dollars to become endowed. And then to try to help reach that goal, we hope to add a golf tournament this spring. And then this year we sent out, which we hadn't done before, we've sent out letters to all of the Hall of Famers. And we've already heard back from six, I think within the first week or so. So that was exciting. And then next year, I think the athletic department hopes to add.
An athletic hall of fame.
And present it that night, hopefully drawing in, you know, more people or a different group of people that we don't have come.
And I think the biggest reason why we reached out to the Hall of Famers was because Drew Tone and kind of with our help are trying to start an alumni association at Garden City High School. And we know that it's going to be a huge task. So whenever I sent the letter to the Hall of Famers, we're asking them to donate a hundred dollars or more to be an honorary pioneer of the Alumni Association. So everything that we send out, anything that we put online, their names are going to be attached to that. So we hope that that's going to draw in some other people too, to see that they're supported. We've had some that have sent in a hundred, we've had some two fifties, some five hundreds. So it's been a really good start to that, and then we just hope to add that. And then we're working on acquiring a database so that we can start reaching out to as many Garden City High School alumni going back as far as we can find those names, to see if we can get something active going and build on that, so.
Questions?
So is the Hall of Fame, the donations that they've sent in, is that towards the legacy fund or is that towards the alumni?
That's towards the legacy right now, but we will probably be chipping into the Alumni Association also. We don't really know what the finances are going to be for the Alumni Association or the need, but we're willing to help with those things since we're kind of promoting it. If they give a hundred dollars, we're asking them to also come to the Buffalo Ball, and we'll announce each one of them and let people put a face with the name and some of those things. So just trying to promote not only our foundation, which I mean, we feel very strongly about, but also Garden City High School and its name.
Have you had initials kind of over at the maybe foundation?
They manage our fund. And so right now, it's a temporary fund because we are giving the money in scholarships. So that's our goal, is to have a separate permanent fund that will be endowed, so then we can participate in things like Match Day.
So just to give you a bit of a background, so we had, over the years, the foundation had so many people that desired to set up permanent funds for scholarships that it became unmanageable for the foundation to administer all of those scholarships. It's a common legacy from people's estates to try to establish some type of scholarship for kids in the future. So we raised the minimum that we have to have to start an endowment fund, quite simply because we couldn't handle all the smaller funds, permanent funds, that people were trying to do. And those requests are still coming in to the foundation to start smaller endowment funds. And those are actually being turned away by the foundation. And I'm just wanting to be sure that she's steering them towards you. Because it would be a real nice fit. You hate to see people get sent away that want to start a permanent fund. They want to start some type of scholarship fund. You're working on getting a large endowment, there seems to be a fit there.
That's true, and now, I mean, we haven't talked to her.
I really would encourage you to sit with Connie and have some discussion with her about what you're doing and what you're shooting for. Because I promise you, she runs across people that try and start scholarships all the time.
But, and we are prepared to possibly not award as many scholarships this year just so that we can reach that amount that we've been told we need to have in our account to make us endowed. So, you know, right now, we're in a better place than we've been the first two years as far as what we've received in donations for the first week or two. So we are very hopeful, I think. And then, like she said, having a golf tournament, I think, is also going to help. And that's one of the biggest reasons why we decided to do that. Because it is very important to us to become endowed. And that this is going to be something that'll be around for a long time and not just a short term. Because, I mean, we see the need for it, and our kids are really benefiting from that.
Any other questions, Phil?
I would just make a quick comment and say, thank you, ladies. These two really have demonstrated huge initiative in getting this going. I don't even want you to estimate the hours of work that we've done for them all these years.
It's phenomenal.
But it really, it's that kind of leadership that really makes Garden City a great place. And you're making a difference with our kids and our school, and so, thank you. And then, last thing, shameless plug, I have tickets for this event I'm supposed to be selling. So if anybody here is interested.
He has ten, he has to sell.
Happy to talk to you about.
Well, thank you both very much. And for the updates, and keep us updated, this is exciting.
For sure.
You know, I can't help saying, I met a couple of people at Hungary or Wichita. And we actually graduated from Garden City High School back in the sixties. Apparently, we had a basketball team that went to state, won state in the sixties. And so one of them was a player on that team. And so I'm thinking, there are folks out there that still are trying to visit Buffalo and are potential leaders like this.
Well, they came with this idea a few years ago, and I was happy to support them and pleased to see the progress they're making. And now where they're talking about this Alumni Association, I have no doubt that in a few years, we will have an Alumni Association that will be off to a great start. Because they've proven themselves, and they're first in billers, so.
Okay, so that's new business we've completed. No, we've got one more, purchase handbook, KJ. There you are, ready?
And I'll try to be really quick, but I did want to, just because I'm going to piggyback off what was just going on with Buffalo Living Legacy. Tim, you mentioned just the administrative issues that go on with Western Kansas Community Foundation. And just so you're aware of what we have done with this group is we actually administer all of the transactions for the scholarships. Any bills that go out for the Buffalo, for the ball, everything goes through our office. And so then, I wait until we get to five thousand or ten thousand dollars. And then I make one request from Western Kansas Community Foundation to reimburse the district. So that has really minimized the amount of time that Western Kansas Community Foundation has had to deal with all of those little things. Because there's a lot of little bills that go out in addition to the scholarships. So that's just something that we have done to kind of help with that.
Well, I'm sure, yeah, I truly appreciate it, especially when you're trying to administer it. And you're administering part of it yourself.
Well, I think sometimes it's easier too. I mean, there's more, and I work with them all the time, so they are great, not to say that they're not. But it's just, it's been easy for us to work with that group to go and do that, so. Just so you know, we're doing that.
Good to know.
Okay, so you all got the wonderful purchasing handbook, which I know you guys read over the weekend because you were so excited about it. So I don't want to really go through all the purchasing handbook because it's a lot of the basics of how we do, what we do, the procedures that are probably not so much that you care about. But we've had some questions about why we do certain things we do or how we do them. So I kind of wanted to touch on some of those things as to kind of help you know what we're doing when it comes to purchasing things within the district. So one thing I think that's real important to notice, and this is going to be really slow, like she had it before. Maybe the batteries don't even work. Fine, we'll do it this way. So just so you know, multiple layers of approval. So every time a PO is issued, it usually starts with a secretary or it's going to start with someone in the business office. But then it's going to go to a first level approver, which is usually going to be a principal or a department head. Then, once it's approved there, it's going to come to the business office, and it goes through one of two, one of three channels. So if it's less than three hundred dollars, it either needs to be reviewed by me or my designated. And I will tell you, I don't review all three hundred dollars unless POs, because there's a ton of them. But one nice thing about business offices, we don't have a lot of turnover. And so the person that is designated to review those for me has a good history in the district, knowing what's allowed, what's not allowed, where should things be coded, those types of things. And we do, there are lots of questions that say, well, what do you think about this? Is this really what we should be doing? Or those red flags, they know what to be looking for. If it's greater than three hundred dollars, every one of those comes through me, and I will review those to take a look at what they're purchasing, ask questions if I want to get some more information on what it is they're purchasing and how they're accounting for it and whatnot. And then, of course, anything greater than ten thousand dollars, you guys get to see, so. Credit card purchases, this is one thing that we've really worked on in the district is to increase the amount of our credit card purchases. Partially just because it's lots of reasons. One, we get summary base, which are nice. Two, it actually lessens the amount of work that we have overall. We don't, we can issue one PO for multiple transactions as opposed to a check for every single thing that was purchased with that credit card. This last year, we went to a new setup. So if we go back a year ago, we had over eight hundred cards that were issued in the district. Almost every new teacher received one, every secretary had one. There were some on the student fund side that were coaches, and then it was all on the district side. And so that, to me, was a considerable amount of liability risk that was out there. Even though there are structures in place that kind of limit those liabilities, that's still a lot of cards to keep track of. So what we've done is we have pulled all those cards back, and we've canceled them. And we've issued cards that are more building specific or department specific. So, for example, a smaller school may have five cards that are Jenny Wilson, one, two, three, four, and five. And if I want to go purchase something, I would have to go to the secretary, whoever's the keeper of the cards, check it out, and when I check it out, I'm going to have to tell them what I want to purchase. So my principal's going to approve it before I even go buy it. Then, when I bring it back, I have to provide my receipts. The secretary's going to do a PO, and the principal's going to approve it again when the PO goes through the process. So it's kind of a way to, a little more checks and balances, plus we don't have so many cards out. We have about two hundred and fifty now. So that has been a considerable decrease in the footprint risk that we have. And those credit cards do have limitations on them. Certain MZC codes are not allowed, you can't go to the liquor store. Certain business establishments maybe wouldn't, would not be allowed to go through. And then a certain dollar amount as well. So anything over five hundred dollars requires someone in my office to open up your card. And we will only do that if we have the approval of your department head or principal. So kind of mitigates the risk a little bit there that if someone had a card, they couldn't get away with more than five hundred dollars, so.
Are the credit cards through most of local banks here?
They are through Commerce. Okay, so we talked about that a little bit. Bids is another thing that we've had a lot of questions on. I think it's easier to talk about when we don't have to have sealed bids, because then the rest of it is all when we do. So if we talk about when sealed bids are not required, they're not required for services. They are not required for educational materials, like the textbook adoption that we are getting ready to do. That is curriculum, and it's secured by a copyright. I will tell you that we do, similar to a bid where we try to compare prices, one of the things that we're doing with that is we are asking for other school districts that have recently purchased the similar products, the same products that we're wanting to purchase. And then we're reaching out to those districts and asking them, what did they pay for each module? How did they get a package deal? And is the deal that we're getting reasonable compared to what they were offered? So at least there's a little bit of a checks and balance, even though there's not a bid process where you go with the lowest bidder.
But all of that, as we heard earlier in the last meeting, is tied up in sort of, does it meet our needs as a curriculum? And, you know, and what does meet our needs? And then, you know, the price is there. Not that we shop for the cheapest curriculum by any means, but we shop for the curriculum that meets our needs, and then we look at the price and other things that the teachers do, and they make their recommendation ultimately. So it's pretty rigorous, I would say.
Absolutely, and we're spending as many dollars as we are for these textbook adoptions. I think we have the ability to tell us, negotiate a little bit. I mean, if they want our business, they'll make sure that we get a fair deal, just like other groups did as well. Nonprofit entities for the blind and the disabled. There are certain groups that we are actually required to purchase from. For example, Catch out of Wichita, they publish a list of products that they can provide. And we purchase from them, I know we do trash bags, we do air filters. Sometimes they're cheaper than where we can get elsewhere, and sometimes they're not. But state statute dictates that if they have a product that meets our needs, we're required to purchase from them, so. So then, obviously, we don't need it. Motor fuels for transportation and natural gas, we don't need a bid. Reconstruction due to an insured property loss. So if a tornado comes through and rips off the roof of a building, the state's not going to require that we take the time to go through a bidding process before we can get that roof fixed. If it's something that would be covered by insurance, then we can go ahead and move forward with that.
Why do we not have to take bids on motor fuel? I mean, is there, who says we don't have to?
State.
You would think you would try to find the best price for motor fuels. Many different types of companies there are, but.
And I will tell you that we actually do shop that as well. We are getting ready to try a new program with a new company that does a different type of different fuel, different diesel fuel. They've got an additive that the vendor that we currently go with does not provide and will not provide for us. So we're going to try that out this year and see if it will help with some of our other costs as well. So we do continually look at those things. If there's an emergency situation that relates to the health, safety, or preservation of property. So if we have a situation, if there was a gas leak of some sort or something that we knew of that was going to be harmful to our students or potentially harmful to the building, if we did not get it corrected soon, we can go ahead and do those kinds of activities without doing a bid. And then lastly is state contracts. And basically, how this works is the state of Kansas, their purchasing department goes through the bidding process for us. And a lot of times, we'll use these for technology. For example, if there's a computer that we want to buy or the iPads. The state of Kansas has actually worked with vendors and already vetted that process and had them bid to them. And usually, those contracts are renewed every year, so copiers, for example. There's usually a different copier vendor on the state contract list every year or so. So basically, the state's already done the work for us, and we can piggyback off that if we want. I will also tell you, sometimes the state contract is not the lowest price. So we do try to work through that too, if we're able to find something lower than the state contract but with similar quality of items. So we don't just take it for face value at a state contract and check the box. So let's talk about things that are required. This is a really small list. Construction, remodeling, equipment, or material goods. So usually, I try to think of anything that you can probably feel, anything that you can look at. That's the things that we're going to have to go through the bidding process. And then I just kind of gave you a summary of what our bid process looks like. So when someone comes to me and says, I want to do a bid for the babies for the CTE pathway, the babies are crap, we had to do those. So I would have, whoever's in charge of that bid, I just thought it was funny when you brought it to me, write the specs, what are all the things that those babies need to be able to do? And what are all the things that she wants to have as far as that item that we want to purchase? And then we give those specs to at least three vendors. We try to do local whenever we can. Sometimes we are not able to find three that are sourced locally, but we do try to do local if we can. They're given a certain amount of time, reasonable amount of time, to generate those bids. And then we let them know they need to be back to us by a certain date. And then at that time, whatever bids I have in my office at that time, I will open. And it can be opened publicly, sometimes we do have, if we have a project, a lot of times with, like a refer, sometimes they'll come in and they want to be a part of that bid opening. That's fine, we do it, and they can see what everyone else's bid was at the same time. Then after that, I would send all of the bids and all of the supporting information to whoever it was that wanted the product. And they're going to look through all of those bids and make sure that they met all of the specs, kind of vet through the process and make sure. Sometimes we've had situations where, hey, I kind of like this attribute of this, but it wasn't part of the specs. Well, if that's more what they want to go towards, the other vendors did not have an opportunity to say, hey, I have a similar product that has that characteristic. So we would, in that situation, possibly get rid of all the bids and start over with new specs to meet the new specifications. Normally, when that doesn't happen, but it does happen from time to time. And so then, we present those to you for approval, and we are required to go with the lowest responsible bidder. Responsible bidder is kind of a, we get to kind of define what responsible bidder is. If we know something about a company that potentially they are going to go under, or we know they're waiting on our money to pay for the last guy's things, you know, maybe we don't want to do business with them, that would be a decision that you would have at this level to decide what's responsible and what's not. But if it meets the specs and they're a responsible bidder, then we would be required to take their lowest bid. And then after that, after you've approved that, then we send a summary to all of the bidders to kind of show them where they fell and how they compared to other people.
Can I ask you a question, Mom? So you're public opening a bid, so say you have three companies that sent you the bid. That bid is sealed until the day and time that you say we're going to open that bid, is that correct?
They are sealed, and they're to be marked whatever they, you know, bid for CTE babies. We have allowed them to be sent in electronically. They have to be sent directly to me, they cannot be sent to anyone else. And I put them in a file and don't open them until that day.
You don't open that email or that file?
No, no, because if I were to open it, then it would allow me to have an opportunity to see something that someone else would have an unfair advantage of if I were to share. Not that I would, but that, you just don't want to ever go through that whole process. But with technology, it's made it much easier for us to do that. Just because it's just easier sometimes to communicate with, through technology. So we've tried to make a way to do that. And we've had situations where a bid has been faxed to the person that wanted the bid, and I told them that I wouldn't accept their bid.
You wouldn't accept their fax?
No, and we actually canceled all those bids at that time and started over. Because that person, even though they may or may not share, they have information that they could share with other potential bidders to upper, you know, to maybe decrease their bid. Hey, I know so and so is going to come in at, you know, fifteen thousand, if you come in at fourteen nine, you'll get it.
Well, how would they know that? They'd need to just talk on the street, is that what you're saying?
They could, but we don't ever want to have that opportunity. So to me, the bid was out there and people had seen it. And that's not an opportunity that I want to even think that could happen. I'd rather know they all came to me and that they were taken care of until the time we opened them.
Can you define again to me how you determine, what's your definition of a responsible bidder? Or who makes that determination?
Ultimately, you get to make that determination. You might make that determination with information that you know or possibly that we know. If we know that a certain individual has had some legal issues that potentially could.
How is that communicated to us? How and when would that be communicated to us?
Through your bid tabulation sheets, those recommendation forms that you see on the consent agenda.
And it doesn't happen often, I think it happens once in the six years I've been here.
It's typically going to say to the recommendations to take the low bidder and the amount such and such. But if there was a lower bid and we were going to recommend disqualifying that, then you would give information to explain why the recommendation was not to take the lowest dollar amount.
All the other bidders get that too? That information?
They get the, they would get the bid tabulation sheet.
Yes, the tabulation sheet.
Just one more question, I just want to make sure I understand this. So whenever we send out bid specs to business A, B, C, we tell them we're going to open these bids at September fifth at twelve o'clock?
The letter usually says they're going to be open on a Monday or Tuesday at two P.M. And then action will be taken at the next regular season.
So it is specific when these will be open?
Absolutely, because that's when they have to have them back to us, right? Because anything that I receive after that, I send back unopened. We can't accept it at that point.
And at that time, you open them and say, here's ABC, bids the lowest, and then you send that information to them, right?
It takes a little bit longer than that, because I want the person that is requesting the item to actually go through. If it's an automobile, I don't want to go through and look through and make sure it made all the specs, but they have to go through and make sure that it checked all the boxes that they were wanting. And that all the, and if there's a bid that didn't meet that, then it doesn't count, so.
Good point.
And as with everything, there's always an exception to the rules. The local bidder exception. So let's take, for example, we have a situation where we are, we weren't able to find three local-sourced bidders. So we bid one or two locally, and we had to go to Kansas City or, you know, Dallas for another one. And when we go through those bids, the non-local bidder, the Dallas, the Kansas City, that bid was actually the lowest. We have an opportunity, if the next lowest bidder is local, they are no more than one percent higher than what the low bid was, their items are equivalent in quality, and they agree to honor the price of the lowest bidder, then we can do that. It's kind of in the way that the state allows us to keep that local commerce going, but if the local bid was two percent more than the low bid, this wouldn't apply.
And how do you define local?
Within our district. And one thing I forgot to mention on state contracts, we can also use state contracts. Say there's an item that we want to purchase, and the state contract price is X. If we have a local vendor that can provide that exact same product, or a very similar product, it has to be very, very similar, and will honor that state contract price, we can use that as well. So it has to be basically the same item, but they're going to go ahead and honor what the state contract price was, we can do that without bidding.
So would that be considered a best bid then, or do we ever do a best bid?
I don't know what that is.
I don't either. That's why I'm asking. I guess a best bid would be, say, you bid on an automobile, and the low bid, their model doesn't have air conditioning, I don't know. And so the best bid is a guy that would throw in all the bells and whistles, but his price might be a little higher. We would always take the low bid, I guess.
As long as the bid meets specs. If the vehicle without air conditioning was lower, but we were, our specs said we have to have air conditioning, we can accept the lowest bid in the air conditioning. That's why it's so important when those bid specs are written, that they be all-inclusive, but yet not so inclusive that they weed out other potential items.
Especially on automobiles, because there's, I mean, they have so many different things there. You know, we have a fifteen-inch tire, ours is a sixteen-inch, you know?
Right, and so that's where you have to decide, what are the most important things to you, what are the non-negotiables? I have to have, that it needs this, this, and this, and everything else would be nice, but I'm not going to make it a requirement.
Who decides that?
Whoever's requesting, like, this or transportation.
So like, on automobile, does that go through the bus? Does that go through Charlie automobile, or?
If it's for his department, if it's going to be a vehicle that school district employees would travel in, or students would travel in, it would go through him. If it's going to be a plant facilities vehicle that our grounds crew would be driving, then it would go through John. Because he knows what equipment he needs, what's important.
So really, the, neither one of those, the most cases, right?
Any questions?
Just none?
Okay.
KJ, thanks for that.
Yep.
Oh, I did have a question.
Guess the bid that...
Done. So a lot of things we hear about building fund, like every, you know, every school has their building fund. So do they use, is the money spent, like, on credit cards necessarily the same money that is built? Is building fund money cannot be spent via a credit card, or?
Absolutely. And that's why we have district building cards at each building now that are generic, one, two, three, four, five, that I go and check out, as opposed to every teacher in the building has one. Because what we were finding was, sometimes those teachers would go and spend their classroom money one time a year, and they spend two hundred dollars. And it just seemed like a way to have that credit card open when it's only being used once a year. So now the teacher can go check it out, and every teacher's checking that, that same card out and spending their two hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you, board. With that, four open discussions where we are at. For this time, it's...
So, thanks.
Put him to the left, yes.
Okay, thanks. First of all, thanks for allowing me to go to the conference this weekend. Good information. I'm going to pass some information on leadership for tomorrow. To KSP, I'm Gene Stake in the class, I'm from Carlin, and so are I, and Phil, and Julie, and hopefully you guys have some difficulty taking, and hopefully we can get someone to sign up for that. A notice on our activity, there is the map of the governor race. At the KSP conference, they brought this map up and said that it's not, you know, vanilla and chocolate ice cream. It's, there was a school board member, her husband redrew this map with how everyone voted, so the map was actually kind of purple. So it wasn't truly all red and all blue, or this, this is all this, it's kind of interesting how they brought that map up. Let's see here. The other thing was, the school visit, I'd like for us to relook at that, and really kind of figure out how we could do that more than... On a board, on a board meeting now, that timeframe is just almost impossible. You know, to get everyone at one school at 4:30 and then be done at 5:50, and then get home and change and eat, and all that good stuff. You know, and I don't know if we always have to have four people, you know, wipe in, you know, two people went and came back and reported what they saw. You know, I think it's important that we try to figure out a way to go and visit those schools, so I'm going to keep asking that question on this, okay? So that, because of time, that's all I have.
Yeah, it certainly wouldn't have worked very well with a long meeting tonight and a tour earlier in the day. Very well, it certainly wouldn't, it didn't work, because people weren't available, so...
And I was gone there, I'd been sick that whole week, so I couldn't even respond, it was kind of, you know, we're just going to relook at it, okay? That's all I'm asking. So, last thing, thank you, Stephanie, for getting the rooms and all that stuff, the rooms were great, and did a great job for us, so thank you. No worries there, they did very good care of us, so.
Thank you for attending.
It was a great conference, hopefully you guys can go next year. It's, you meet so many people and learn so many different things. I always do the school tours, and just to see the things that different school districts are doing, and visited, they're like the, like the West, they just built a new school three stories high, so. You know, you see that, and I told Dr. Carl, we need a new high school.
You could go out and see that.
Don't forget that. So that's all I have.
And then Gene, you attended as well?
I did, too. There were four board members in both of Carlin, so it was a great conference, and I think, you know, if you haven't attended, you have enough to, you can do so in the future. Next year, they said it would be in Wichita, Wichita is a little more convenient for us. So I think they said December sixth, seventh, or eighth is the timeframe. They already have established the date, so when you want a big time of school, it's like, you may be able to tell in advance. And that map that Tim was talking about, it was redrawn proportionally by Adam Smith, so that it, because it actually showed a very small area of support for the Democratic Governor candidate, but they redrew it proportionally to show the population that it represented as opposed to the geographic area. And it really changed the whole map, so that it was more blue than red, because otherwise it looked more red than blue. But if you, if you go on the KSP website, or if you Google Adam Smith, I don't know, Kansas Governor of Math or something, you probably would be able to find it. So I've seen it on social media, but it's also available anywhere. But it was just really interesting, there's so many ways to display information, and some of them are disluding, and some of them probably more accurately represent, you know, what happens, and that's what he was able to do for us. But it was, they had great speakers, and a lot of good information, so.
Anything else for that, Tim?
No, I'm just really, really excited about the future of education in Kansas, there's just so many things going on, and a real recognition that teachers are so important to educating students and kind of improving education for kids, I think.
Well, again, congratulations on your election to the state board of education.